At 6:30, we will call the Special Board of Public Works meeting to order. I know that Alder Morrow is excused. Trish, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mayor Wiesa.
Here.
Here.
Corey Lattick.
Here.
Jeremy Slawinski.
Here.
Sean Morrow's excused and Tori Jennings.
Here.
Take care of Zarazuga.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum, so we will continue. We only have one item on the agenda tonight, and that is regards to the temporary repairs and reconstruction of Country Club Drive. I think at least some of that was outlined for you in the memo from the Director of Public Works. Director, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Relative to that, we have had a little more time to spend putting some of our own things together, so I do have a couple of estimates that we prepared in engineering, as well as to go with those to give everyone an idea of what we're talking about, some typical sections to share.
Okay, so why don't you hand those out to the committee members at the very least, and then you can go through the numbers that we found. Basically, for those listening and watching at home, Country Club Drive is in the Town of Hall. There's a section between Highway 10 and the new city overpass grade separation that is in rough shape. It is in the Town of Hall, and we found an agreement that has a year of 1985. There are signatures on it from a former mayor and the town chairman, and there's no date on it, but it talks about the city. When a reconstruction is needed, the city can pay for 70% of it, and the Town of Hall will pay for 30% of that reconstruction. Obviously, this is outside of our normal budgeting and capital project. I know we had asked for some information in regards to the maintenance schedule that had been done, but we just decided internally here, at the very least, to bring it to the committee and look at some of the options. So right now, I know we're only talking about the road reconstruction. There are some opportunities here, however, for the Town of Hall or other interested parties to make some additional improvements, one of which, I think, would be a great opportunity, and that is a multi-use path. But again, this is within the Town of Hall, not the City of Stevens Point. So what we're talking about tonight is the possibility of reconstructing Country Club Drive in an expeditious fashion, and the Director has compiled some numbers, and I'll turn it over to you, Director, to let us know what you found.
Okay, thank you. So I guess the idea here that we otherwise have put together -- I'm getting picked up here -- is with the typical--
Director, why don't I have you come up to the lectern?
I can share with you.
Thank you. I think the microphone's on. I'm not on 100% sure on that.
Sure, it's on. So with the typical sections, actually starting at the bottom to look at that first, excluding what you see to the right-of-way line, the multi-use path would be a replacement in kind for what exists there currently. The upper one would be a slight change to what exists there. The reason we always looked at that is there seemed to be some discussion we'd heard from people identifying this multi-use path, that existing path is at least 10 feet wide. I think it's actually 12 feet across the bridge, the Hoover Overpass. So kind of the idea, just to see what it is, because I think, as I stated in the memo, really the biggest concern that we otherwise have in engineering is just making sure that whatever we do now should be a long-term solution, and whatever happens now, we're going to have to live with. So we don't want to go too quickly, although the pavement is definitely in need of some attention. We just want to make sure that we've given some thought to things, and everyone knows what the ramifications of whatever choices are being made. So if we wanted to keep a multi-use path more typical to what we've seen around town and what exists, we'd probably be looking for that 10-foot range. Now, that gets pretty tight to fit with the existing pavement widths that are out there right now, so that lends itself to actually narrowing the cross-section of the road a little bit. Now, the one thing, of course, to do this is we've been working diligently to get this out, so we really just finished up today, so we haven't had any chance to talk. We haven't talked to the town about this or anything else. This is really hot off the presses. Just actually was downstairs getting these off the printer when I came out, while I was a little bit late. So that's what we're otherwise talking about. However, probably that gives you an idea of what the two estimates are. Yours is actually two-sided. I've got two estimates to correlate with those two. The section at the top of the page is the 24-foot. So if you look across the top, it'll say estimate for Country Club Drive, 24 feet of pavement. The bottom one would be then the one with 30 feet of pavement, as the pavement width is wider, to give you an idea of what we're looking for as an estimate. Now, these are using numbers that are very fresh from us, from recent projects, to see what we feel it is, and we definitely come up with something more significant than what the town had presented to Corey when he was at their task force meeting the other week. So as you somewhat suspected, and I had stated in the memo, as thinking that with some changes, this would be utilizing the type of pavement design that we feel would be more appropriate, given the volume of traffic, now that we've had time to do accurate traffic counts, but the volume of traffic, the number of trucks that otherwise operate within that corridor, and as well as adding some swales to accommodate and correct some of the drainage issues that exist. So we're definitely looking at more than $155,000, in our opinion, to do this right. From our perspective, this is what we'd be looking at. And I said, the only difference really between these two estimates is kind of what we're looking for as far as the path and how that may lend itself into whatever sort of roadway work may be done today. My assumption is, and that's as the mayor had identified for the town, really to decide, if the path would go, and that's not part of the roadway construction, but how does that fit in, and what are the ramifications of what we do today, making decisions into what the future may be? So that's kind of it in a nutshell. What we have, the rest of it was, I think, in the memo. But the only other thing I could really add to it is, we did have an opportunity to talk with American Asphalt, and kind of others have been going more towards temporary solutions, would be how really to work within that timeframe. So to work expeditiously, they have a solution that would probably fall underneath the bidding threshold that would probably get us through the summer, but it would be questionable whether or not that could survive a winter. But that would pretty much just be patching the holes that always exist there in large swaths. To do something that would be, and of course, just for everyone's aware, the bidding threshold is $25,000, so it would be looking something that would probably very much so push to that limit. In talking with them, they do have some thoughts as far as what could potentially give us another year or so to do that, and we're talking probably in the -- don't have the finalized numbers, but $40,000 to $50,000 would probably give us something that would then work to make repairs suitable, that would be more likely to last through a winter, although another winter like this last one could be rough on just about any roadway. But that would probably get us to a point where it wouldn't be this immediate need to do the complete reconstruction, reservicing of that roadway. But that would be what we've talked to them, having gone through all the finer details of what that plan would be, but it would probably consist, for the most part, of patching those areas that are in roughest shape, and then doing just a thin overlay over the whole thing, just to make sure as the plow trucks and we're not getting water into the overlaps there, and the plow trucks aren't hitting the edges of those patches and stuff, just to seal it, to make sure it would last through a winter, if we wanted to stretch it. Yes?
I'm sorry, are you finished?
Yeah, I believe that's--
All right. So because this isn't budgeted, it's not in our capital routine, and I'm going to have the Comptroller Treasurer speak to the financials of it. Coming out of the existing streets budget, what would this ballpark amount mean for the city streets?
One second, I gotta -- I didn't have time to calculate our percentage here. Things, but it's gone up a little bit, and I'm trying to -- so if we're looking in here, I'll just go this round in rough numbers. So just in rough numbers, we're looking at using these estimates in lieu of the town-provided estimates, and even thinking the 24-foot of pavement, like I said, we haven't discussed it with them, but narrowing the pavement would keep us at a lower cost of road reconstruction. And we're looking at about $240,000 as our share to accomplish that. In order to do that, we don't have quite that much remaining in our streets budget to cover those costs. As I identified in the memo, we have approximately $155,000 that we've set aside, kind of in the planning, going back over to last year, as we're trying to find ways to save on projects and to use any of the contingency dollars that haven't been spent and carry those over, as well as just trying to be selective of some of the other maintenance and repairs we've done this year. We have come up with $155,000 to tackle one of two projects that had been identified in years past, being either Cozy Street or Neville, and with Neville probably being the more in need of one based on traffic and overall condition to do that. We also have kind of internally worked on some things, knowing the condition of Country Club Drive as it was going into the winter. We've kind of just not touched approximately $40,000 within our budget, assuming that some of that would probably have to go to Country Club. And quite honestly, going into last fall, that was just kind of a guess on our part to make sure we had saved something, so we weren't caught completely unprepared. So we probably have just shy of $200,000 that we could spend on that, part of which would be earmarked for this, to do work on Country Club. The majority of it, however, would then be taken from that Neville Street project, which would have to be postponed for at least another year then.
Okay, thank you. And stay up there, because I think we're going to have some questions, but I want to have Corey give our treasurer an opportunity to speak on this as well.
Sure. So the Director and I had already spoken about the initial estimate and the $150,000, and I think we felt pretty good that we could figure that out. This higher number, I guess this is my first time seeing the higher number, so I'd say that we could look in a couple of different places. One of the things that we could look at is how the existing capital projects are coming in throughout the capital budget for 2019, and usually, as the year goes on, we get a better picture of that as we're going forward. The other thing, we're still working through our annual audit. We can also take a look at how fund balance is coming in to see if there would be any money available there. So I guess those would be the first two places that I would look. At this point, I don't have a magic pot of money handy right now, but certainly, I think, if this is something that needs to happen, there are a couple of places that we could look for it. If worse comes to worse, and if neither of those work out, also, we have not done our annual borrowing yet this year. So that would be the other option, would be to increase our annual borrowing. Of course, that's not something that we usually like to do as far as borrowing more than we planned, but this was unexpected, and we're in a situation where, I guess, we have to do the best we can with the circumstances.
The annual borrowing, if we were to add some money to the borrowing, does that require a budget amendment?
It may, because at that point, you're changing the amount of the capital budget, and you're changing that total amount of that capital budget, so yes, I would say that that would require a budget amendment, which also, just for full disclosure, then would require 2/3 approval of the council, so you would need eight members to vote in the affirmative on that.
Thank you, and I apologize to the Alders and staff. I know we're trying to expedite this. We had that initial estimate from the Town of Hall that was just kind of a ballpark. I asked the Director to try and get some better numbers. We felt that was kind of low, and he's been working very diligently trying to get these. These came in today. I hadn't even seen them yet, so we didn't know exactly where we were going to stand. So the numbers are before you as soon as we have them. We're trying to get this decided on quickly, because in the normal process, we'd be talking about road repair in October for the following year. We are in a time crunch now that if we're going to do something this year, we want to get that process rolling, because we don't want to start making approvals in August and September, and then run into winter and not get it done this year. So that's why we're here. This is, of course, your decision, the Board of Public Works, and then Common Council. I will -- Director Lemke, did you have anything to add? One of the questions that I got was, what sort of utilities are under Country Club? And I have no idea, because my GIS doesn't cover the Town of Hall. Do you have any ability to do that? Or Pete, I think you're -- did you want to speak on this at all?
I really don't know much about that name.
Okay. For those of you who don't know, Pete Kaminsky is with the Town of Hall on the Highway Department or Streets Department in the Town of Hall. Chairman Holdridge was unable to make it tonight, as were pretty much all of the other board members, because this was kind of a quick meeting, but they did send some information in regards to that, that they would be interested in pursuing that multi-use path. They talked -- either they have talked, or they will be talking to members of the Green Circle Trail, but John Holdridge says he would bring it up. There's a meeting on Wednesday at 10:30 a.m. Chairman Holdridge says he would bring it up at that meeting. Any questions from the committee for -- I'm sorry, Joel?
Yeah, just to get to your question about utilities, we do have water main, sewer, gravity main, and sewer force main, all within that street. I haven't heard anything about the Green Circle's involvement. I'm the treasurer this year.
Okay, and I know I'm probably putting you on the spot, but in your estimation, are those utilities in need of repair? If we were to do a reconstruct, and this was a city street, would we be looking at utility replacement as well? No? Okay, good. That saves some money. Alder Slawinski, you had a question?
So what's the existing typical right now? Is it 30?
The existing typical would be similar to the 30 without the swales, and of course, the multi-use path.
Okay. And then the estimate, and I don't know, I read it somewhere, that the Green Circle, that path would be reimbursed for that?
Well, what otherwise is understanding is when --
So I thought--
-- Treasurer Lattick was at the task force meeting, so it was mentioned that the -- and I guess you maybe had more specifically since you were there, so I don't screw it up.
Sure, I guess I'd say we've heard differing things on that. We did hear that there was some interest from the Green Circle Committee, but then we've also heard from other members of that committee that it really hasn't been brought forward for a formal vote by that board yet, so it's, they can't really commit to that is sort of the last thing that I've heard.
And I would ask, I think we have the treasurer for the Green Circle Trail Committee present here. Director Lemke, could you speak to that?
Yeah, I haven't heard of it yet through the committee, through the Green Circle Trail at all. I can tell you that we did consider one similar thing this year during budgeting time and finding the cost related to it. It fell off the radar very quickly. The other thing is, just as a general explanation, they do everything they can to get trails off of roads, so where we are on roads, it's because there's a need to. They don't do a lot in the way of participating in the improvement of paving.
Okay, thank you. And for those of you who didn't figure it out, Director Lemke is the treasurer for the Green Circle Trail Committee. Alder Slawinski?
And then I'm assuming, this is assuming that that subgrade is in good condition. I mean, what--
Yes, and that's one of the things that, within our estimate and what we feel would be more appropriate, even to pulverize and relay it, what we would otherwise look into doing is taking all that, yeah, pulverize it, basically move everything to one side of the road, and actually undercut that base to add more, just to stabilize it, because that's definitely a concern of ours as well, is is it truly sufficient to--
So that is part of your plan?
So that was otherwise, yes, given consideration to that, because that's part of, from the beginning, we're doing it. Because again, it goes to the type of traffic, the volume of traffic, and the type of traffic with the trucks that do travel on it. And we definitely want to make sure that, and that pavement design starts all the way from the base. It's not just the asphalt, so we wanted to look at the whole thing.
And one more question. I know you don't have a crystal ball, but if everything were kind of to come in line, what, I mean, design this, put it out for bid, I mean, what can we kind of expect for construction?
If we were to -- I don't know exactly how busy American is at the moment, but my understanding is that they were willing to do something, otherwise I thought they could mobilize yet this summer to do it. I think to give us some time to design it, we'd just push it back towards the fall. I don't see why we still couldn't accomplish that, if that's what our goal was, is to get it done this year. And so instead of maybe two months, we'd probably need at least another month. Either way, it's going to have to be bid. It's just a matter of how much design effort goes into doing it. Just straight pulverizing relay is pretty straightforward. We would need a little more time to work out some of this with the swales and stuff throughout the corridor, and where that trail might otherwise lie, if that was a future consideration. So we would need a few extra weeks to get that put together. So we'd probably push to, you know, a month, maybe two.
And when you say "we," are we talking about the engineering? Our engineering is going to--
We could do that. We've already completed a survey on this, so we have the information to do it, or whether we hand it off to someone else, if that's otherwise the desire. I don't think it would take long to get that. I think the engineering department could do it faster, because we're ready to go, even though we've got projects to do, but we could make it a priority and get it done.
Okay. Thank you. And I just want to caution, we did talk internally about having our engineering department do the work, and yes, we could probably do it quicker and cheaper. However, because it's a Town of Hall road, it seems to make more sense to have an outsider third-party engineering firm do the work. Not that it would happen, but 20 years from now, or 15 years from now, if something does go wrong, they might be able to say, someone might be able to say it was the city engineering that caused the problem, putting us potentially at some exposure risk there. But that's still for us to decide. President Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Director Badun. Following up on Alder Slawinski's questions, I would caution against diving into wanting to get this done as quickly as possible, because we'd hate to have one bidder show up. I mean, all the crews are, I mean, they're all full with work, and having the latitude to kind of work into the fall if we can, I think I would love to see at least three or four or five companies bid on this, but if we try to push this out now, I think we're going to end up with, we'll be lucky with one.
And that definitely becomes a risk at this time of the year versus, yes, if we did have it through the fall and committed it out first thing in 2020, I would agree we would probably have a better bidding environment at that time.
Okay. Alder Enbel?
Thank you, Mayor and Director Badun. My question would be the cost of the swales. Would that fall under the city to take care of that portion of it? Because again, every amount of this keeps adding up to--
Right. I guess that would otherwise need to be set in. In my opinion, the multi-use path is exactly that, a multi-use path, even though it's within the right-of-way. You know, if there were sidewalks, the town wanted to add sidewalks to the other side. I think that too would be, even though it's in the right-of-way, that would not be the agreement. As I read it, it is the roadway. So I would think that's pretty much everything that I think, because of the swales really, in my opinion, otherwise, it'd add about, oh, was it $10 a lineal foot for each side of it? It's not, you know, once I -- for the man, like $35,000, $45,000 for the overall project, so it's maybe 10%. While it does add something, I think that's a necessary part of it, because that's part of a long-term design for the roadway itself, where I think in order to ensure that the pavement lasts as long as it possibly can, doesn't rely on having the multi-use path there or anything like that, but it does have to have proper drainage. I think that would be a necessity as far as I'm concerned, related to the road reconstruction.
And the second question I have also is that, again, is this going to be a long-term agreement that we have forever and a day now with Town of Hall? Because if this were from 1985--
That would be a good Logan question.
I would think there should be a timeframe that it is not 70, 30 at least.
Well, there, you know, according to the agreement, as I read it, and I don't know if otherwise Logan ever commented, that when it's annexed, the agreement terminates.
So when it happens and--
When the annexation occurs, and it's no longer within the town, otherwise, there is no ending to the agreement that I read into there anywhere.
One be made, though? Two?
That would have, of course, be, I mean, that's a good Logan question. I think both parties would have to agree to it.
Because it just seems, and the, oh, one other question was then, again, it just seems to be like a forever, let's just keep paying everything. But the other question would be then, the weight of trucks on there. When I looked through there, it said that both parties would have to agree if there was a weight limit on the road. Why aren't we doing that? Because that street, that road was never made for truck traffic. And there was, at one time, I thought, the thought was that trucks would take the highway to HH, which was constructed for that kind of--
And I don't know the overall history of the road and the street structure. What I do know is that sometime, and I don't know the exact year, and I don't know if we have a record of it, this is just going with what people who have been around longer than I have have told me, is that in the early 2000s sometime that that road was milled and overlaid. I do know that when they were doing some of the preliminary work for the overpass, some of the pavement thicknesses there were surprisingly thick. So it seems to me that that road is suitable. I think even looking at it right now, I'm not sure that we're actually seeing the basin. I think a lot of what it's doing is just that upper layer of pavement, so I think what we're seeing beneath it, which is remaining, is where the road was originally milled off to get there. So I think there's actually a good substrate there to, and I think that's part of the reason why, even in my memo, identified some sort of longer-term solution, because I'm not sure that the road is completely shot, as it is, that couldn't be fixed to carry us into, through proper planning and design, if we so chose to take that road. However, there's, of course, a cost to make those repairs, then there's yet a cost of reconstruction. So again, you're talking about adding costs, you're taking some costs in it, and it's where do we draw the line, and how do we want this project otherwise to go? But I think what you're actually seeing there is that there is actually pavement beneath it, because I don't think anyone, I've tried through there quite a bit. There's not gravel coming up, because we haven't gotten into the base. We're just getting into another layer of older asphalt that still lies beneath that surface.
Okay, Alder Jennings, and then Alder Niebone.
Director, so you don't think the rapid deterioration of the road is a result of the increased truck traffic as a result of the Hoover Overpass?
I think it contributes. I mean, all the extra traffic and stuff that's going to, we don't have actual counts, but I would say that there's more traffic going through there now than there was before. I think it actually does contribute to it, but whether that is the, it's not the sole contribution, because I think the condition of the road is already there. I think you look back, even before that Hoover Overpass project came up, and there were already patches in the road and cracks, and there were things, and those are the areas that they are. In fact, if you look out there, you'll see that the, it's only really on the south side. It's the only really bad spot is the area on the southern 400, 500 feet of the road. It's 1,700 feet total. The side that's really deteriorated the most is the side on the, is the Northbound Lane on the east side, and a lot of that has to do with, because you can see nearly everyone. Every bad spot within there is an area that if you pass through there in the spring, you would have splashed through the water to get there. That's definitely a contributing factor to it. Otherwise, with the cracks that were otherwise in there, I don't know what the history of cracks getting otherwise abandoned, or any other work that occurred, but you have several things going. The three things that deteriorate a road are, of course, the traffic, the weight, so the heavy loads, sunlight, and water. And you definitely have at least two of those happening there. And even in the wintertime, as things were freezing and thawing, there was a lot of standing water out there, and a lot of times, you can see the canopy of the tree shading off the road as well, and not even allowing it to dry off. There's no place for the water to run off the road, and there isn't any sunlight getting down there to even dry it off, you know, in that means.
And is it understood how the Hoover Overpass diverted water into that area? Is that understood?
How the--
Changed the movement of water in that area? Is that understood?
We haven't otherwise studied it. I'm not sure how much any of that is otherwise changed. Much of the Hoover Overpass is otherwise, was designed to contain water within that basin at the bottom of the hill.
Right.
But much of it is going, as you go north on there, the Hoover Overpass has no impact on where that water goes. As I said, much of it is, it's just the water stands there, and that's the reason why the pavement was in that condition. Like I said, even before the Hoover Overpass had begun, you could see the pavement condition in the areas that are under distress now, starting to occur.
I do have a statement to make about this. Do I do that now?
Sure, but I want to have Director Lemke, who is the Director of Public Utilities, which includes stormwater, make a comment in regards to how, if at all, the installation of that overpass affected the water on the roads in Country Club Drive and the Town of Hall.
Everything within the project limits for the overpass project drains internally, so comes off the road into structures and a pipe into two big ponds that were built for it. So nothing's going on the road and running into that. In fact, all the projects that are done in that fashion, it's kind of one of the requirements from their project limits, and you collect the water.
Thank you. We've got one minute before we are required to call the council to order. What we will do is, in one minute, we'll call the council to order, and then we will stand in recess until such time as we get the Special Board of Public Works meeting done. Alder, is your comment less than a minute?
Probably not.
Okay. Alder Niebone?
I think if we move quickly, we do so at our peril. I think we need to design this road for the future, not for the now. If the problem is water, just filling some holes isn't going to help. We have-- We have to, we have to build this road so it lasts. We're gonna look pretty dumb if we have to come back in two years and say, well, you know, if we'd have spent an extra $100,000 two years ago, we wouldn't have to spend $300,000 now. So I think we should let the engineers, whoever they may be, have an opportunity to look at what's gonna make this road right for all users and go from there.
Thank you. And with that, I am going to recess the Board of Public Works meeting for this Common Council meeting. Now I will reconvene the Special Board of Public Works. We were in the middle of the discussion regarding the possible reconstruction of Country Club Drive. Alder Jennings, you had comments?
Yes, the, in terms of city decision-making, there's probably nothing that makes me angrier than the Hoover overpass. It's an example of incredibly poor planning, poor, poor engineering, and poor decision-making on the part of the council at that time, and the mayor and leadership in general. Diverting money to the overpass is why we have a deteriorating Division Street, the economic engine of our community, and we have no way of funding the redesign and reconstruction of that important corridor. The biggest benefactor of the overpass is Clover, who didn't spend a dime on it, and who isn't spending a dime on it now. So people paying taxes in Clover can get to work on time in Stevens Point. As the director indicated, truck, increased truck traffic as a result of the Hoover pass now is a diverted area, has in some way contributed to the rapid deterioration of the roadway. So Stevens Point City taxpayers are facing costs for this massively overbuilt Hoover overpass, and we are responsible for maintaining it, repairing it, and eventually replacing it. And now we're facing the costs of this roadway as a result of the Hoover overpass. There's just so many things that we're terrible about that, and I'm just really angry that this is happening again. And I will not even consider voting for this if there's not a multi-use path that is in the Portage County Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. AE Comms plans were altered to accommodate that multi-use path on the west side. So those things, I won't even consider that if that path is not here. I agree with alders that have spoken already that let's not waste money on Band-Aids and let's do this properly. And I get very nervous when there's these, you know, quick, we gotta do this. And one last comment, I really didn't appreciate it, Mayor, that you got on Facebook making claims that this, that appeared to be this is a done deal before council even saw this. And I object to that. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments from the committee? Alder Slawinski?
I guess I just want to reiterate that I too, I'm not for Band-Aids, but I'm just concerned that if we try to rush this now, we possibly can miss something and, you know, potentially be costly in the future. I think it's definitely worth the, the money invested to do a temporary fix and do this right and, you know, plan on for next year, next spring, and then that way we have more competitive bidding. I think we will recover our temporary fix just by doing it that way.
Commissioners, sorry, committee members, what are your wishes?
I guess
Alder Slawinski?
I'll move forward to, or move to approve a temporary repair or instruct Department Scott and his department to come up with a temporary repair plan, and then continue to move forward with a more final reconstruct plan for possibly next year or however it may be.
Okay. We have a second? Second by Elder Person Niebon. Further discussion?
Well, I guess
For treasurer.
I have a question for the, the director is just, so, you know, in your estimation, I know you said you're thinking about 40 to 50,000 to get it to last through the winter. Do you think that we will indeed recover that with a, a lower bid price in the, the following year?
Well, I don't have my crystal ball, but I, yeah. I mean, a 50, 40, 50,000 dollar price take, we'd, you know, I guess we'd be looking at about a 10%, you know, slightly larger than 10% savings. Then I think bidding at the right time could probably get there. I'm not sure we would recoup all of it, but I do think we have potential to recoup most of it. That's probably about as close as I can, I can say.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner?
Nope, that was my only question.
Okay. Alder Jennings?
I'm not su, are we voting on this typical? Is this a typical that will be used?
I would defer to the alder who made the motion on this.
No, I mean, I, this is just preliminary, and again, that's the reason why I don't, I don't, you know, this was put together in what, a day, two days?
So Alder Slawinski, if I understand your motion, the only action you're taking tonight is directing, Director Badun to move forward with getting estimates for temporary repairs?
Yes.
And then authorizing the director to put into the capital budget for next year?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's my intentions, yes.
Okay, so no dollar amounts are being approved tonight? The motion is that the director will move forward and get an estimate for the temporary repair that will get us through the end of the year, and get, come back to this committee for costs on that, and that the reconstruction costs be further researched, and that comes back into the 2020 capital plan. Is that correct, Alder?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on the motion? Okay, if you are, Alder Niebon?
I would, Director Badun, would that give, is, are we gonna be throwing good money after bad if we do this now and, and give ourselves a chance to engineer something? Is this money, do you consider this, in your professional opinion, is this money well-spent looking at the long-term future of that road?
I, I do. I think, yeah, this is actually a good plan to go through it, because I think what we'll otherwise do with the planning, if anything, has already been set up well documented, you know, the more you otherwise plan something, the more you save at the end result when you do construction. So it's not always quantifiable, but if we take our time and plan it right, we will probably find, maybe not monetarily, but I think we'll find more savings by adding either more value into what we're doing ultimately for the community, or just in actual savings more than what we'll pay for any temporary repairs to get us to that point.
Okay? Any other comments? I'm just gonna make one comment. As a member, I am going to be voting against this, simply because the need is there two months ago. And if we continue to drag our feet on this, the, the people who use that road, the people that live on that road are gonna continue to experience things. We're pushing construction out even for repairs at least another month before we approve it, at least another month before they get started. And something needs to be done sooner rather than later. Okay, President Johnson?
Well, I'm not a member of the committee. I'm, I'm going to respond to you, what you just said, and thank you for letting me speak. I agree that needs repairs, but I wholeheartedly agree with Alder Slawinski. I would argue that there are Stevens Point streets that are woefully, they're in dire straits, and I had more calls from more of my constituents on this than any other thing in my three terms. My constituents are angry, particularly those who on Center Street east of Michigan, because a former mayor, the former mayor before you had promised a certain rebuild which never occurred. Gilkey Street is bad. There are streets that are bad all over the place. If we use that, that sort of mentality that this is bad and there's people driving on it every day, that can't work. I agree with the director, and based on my experience, bidding projects, multimillion-dollar projects, you don't do them hastily because you'll have one bidder at the table and they've got you by the you-know-what.
Absolutely. And while this isn't a multimillion-dollar project, it does make sense to plan it out a little bit, so that there, the engineering work that has been done can lay this out. I, I think at least some of the concern is this multi-use path that is not part of the road, in my opinion. This is a separate piece of it, but it could be constructed later. Thank you. So if you are in favor of the motion to ask the director to get bids or quotes for the temporary repairs to get us through the year, and then have the street reconstruct in our capital project, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no. And Tricia, I will ask you to call the roll, please.
Mary Risa?
No.
Mary Niebon?
Is that me? Uh, yes.
Rattick?
Aye.
Jeremy Slawinski?
Aye.
John Morrell, excused. Tori Jennings?